So we are coming back from closed session with no reportable action. I would like to welcome you to tonight's City Council meeting. Public comment is welcome regarding any item on tonight's agenda. If you wish to speak about an item that is already on the agenda, please wait for the item to be called. When the agenda item is discussed, I will ask for public input. At that time, please come forward to the podium and address the council. We appreciate your printed name on the sheet provided so the minutes can reflect the proper spelling of your name. If you wish to speak on an item that is not already on the agenda, please complete a citizen input form which is located on the table as you came in and submit it to the city clerk now. You will have three, you will have three minutes. Now. You will have three minutes in which to address the council. Please note that the council cannot take action on any item that has not been agendized. Thank you for being with us this evening. All right. Can we please have the, we're going to have to call the order and the roll call.
Uh, council member Matina?
Here.
Council member Parlet?
Here.
Council member Spur?
Present.
And Mayor Protem Barnes?
Present.
And Mayor Turner is absent.
She is. All right. Zach, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Acceptance of agenda and urgency items. I understand that there is a change to the agenda. Nick, would you like to?
Yeah, thank you. Item J on the consent agenda appears to have an error in one of the dates, so we're asking to pull that item from the consent agenda and place it as item B3 under council business.
Okay. Are there any other modifications to the agenda? Any urgency items? Okay. I have an entertaining motion.
So I'll move for acceptance of the agenda minus the 4J.
We have a motion. Anyone in second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Now on to item four, consent agenda. The following consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. Ordinances. Waive the reading by title of any ordinances under consideration at this meeting. Approve the minutes of the City Council's regular meeting of May 15, 2018, and the special meeting of May 29, 2018. Approve the warrant register of May 25, 2018. Approve the application 2018-020 with staff recommendations for the 2018 splash-in event to be held September 7 through 9, 2018. Approve application 2018-021 with staff recommendations for the 2018 Oktoberfest event to be held October 6, 2018. Reject claims number 2018-004 and 2018-005 filed by Beverly and Jacqueline John respectively, as recommended by Remith. Adopt a resolution amending and adopting an updated conflict of interest code. Adopt the proposed resolution adopting a records retention schedule and authorizing destruction of certain city records. And rescinding resolution number 2651, 2018. Adopt the proposed resolution to reaffirm the necessity of AB 1600 development impact fees. Would any council member like to pull any of these items? Anyone from the public? All right. No one would want to pull anything?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for approval of the consent agenda minus the J again.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any opposed? Okay. Public presentation, citizen input. Do we have any citizen input? Hi Suzanne.
Hi. Suzanne Lyons. I just wanted to say that I attended the water department's open house last Wednesday. It was very impressive. They did a very nice job. I think it's something that if you did it maybe every year, it would be wonderful. I don't know how well attended it was. When I was there, there seemed to be a fair number of people. And it was really informative. The place looked wonderful and I thought it was a very impressive place.
Someone teachers would like to do field trips next school season after being more educated. Thank you all.
Any other citizen input? We're now going to move on to a presentation. The Lakeport Main Street Association will present the Business of the Quarter Award.
Actually, we have a lot more than that, but we will start with that. And good evening. Welcome to us, right? Yeah, they welcome us. We have our businesses, we are reenacting our businesses of the quarter, which we kind of disbanded for about a year and a half. And we are bringing back a lot of things that we did do before and we are doing them now. And I am Barbara Bruny, president, and this is Panette Talier, the executive director. And so for the Business of the Quarter, we have Park Place. They want, Jeremy, please, for us. This means a lot. This means a lot with your mom and everything else and this is for you. Do you have anything you want to say? Because you could talk for five minutes if you want.
Oh. I don't think anybody wants me to talk for five minutes.
How about three?
Let me take a picture.
Why don't we show this? We had to do my good side. I don't even have one. Is there anything you would like to say? Congratulations. We voted on this, all of the members.
Thank you very much. On behalf of all of us at Park Place, thank you all. It's actually a great honor. We've been here a long time and we really appreciate everybody allowing us to keep doing what we do best, so thank you very much.
And you do do it, yes. Thank you so much. Thank you. Congratulations. Yes, we have a lot to thank for you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Panette, you get next for a second. Money.
Yes. Money? Well, as you know, we've been helping the city with the tree program and we've managed to get almost half of them or a little over half of them donated or whatever. And we would like to present the city with a check for...
Money.
Money. I'll come get it. A little over...
Stacy's coming.
A little over ninety-eight hundred dollars.
Yeah.
And we still, you know, I still, we still have a little bit of money that we haven't turned in because we have to keep the account open until we sell them all. And people are still showing interest in them, so we hope maybe by the end of this year, we can get them all spoken for, right?
And then last, was it last weekend? The 26th was attended by Margaret and a lot of dignitaries. And we did the three man post in front of the museum, one for Janelle Chapman, and she's right on the corner so she can look down at City of all. And Jillian Bilster and Byron Whipple. So all, they had a lot, oh, and Senior, excuse me, Bill Whipple Senior too. We had a wonderful turnout and Pastor Shannon did a very beautiful job. And then we dedicated the trees, basically the people paid for them. And then we dedicated and gave the mural to the city that Main Street purchased. And I think it's lovely, a lovely attraction. And the design committee is coming up with a few more that they're intending on doing. And what else was next?
Oh, yes. Come here, we have...
Two more checks.
Yes. Totalling over eighteen thousand dollars.
Stacy? So you have more money. Well, we all knew that.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
The dedication was beautiful that you had of the 26th and I really appreciate it. It was very nice. And a plug for the trees, it's six hundred dollars to adopt a tree. And you get a plaque with what, either you want to dedicate it to someone that's passed or to your family or whatever, but it's really nice. It'll be there forever, a plaque with their family's name on it.
Thank you, Margaret.
So thank you so much for handling that.
Thank you. Now, we only have one more thing, and I'll really try and cut it short. Lakeport Main Street Association would like to invite you, Tim, our mayor, and the city officials, which that means all of you, as well as anyone in the audience. We are having a, an informative social dinner or meeting tomorrow night, just a d'urb, maybe a little wine, something like that. And we're going to have it at the Yacht Club. And it's going to be very nice at 5:30. There's really some exciting things that Main Street, Lakeport Main Street Association is going to be doing this year. And the city, on the city's behalf, they are helping us, which the city always helps us in a great way, so we appreciate that. And we're looking forward to anyone coming that would like to, who wants to learn more about what we're doing. I'm being a panette. Did you say I'm talking too much? I could just see her talking. Anyway, and Kevin Ingram has done an awesome slide presentation that you've got to see. It's awesome. And we thank you very much. I'm done.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Entertaining, too. All right. Council business. Tourist improvement district. Martha?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I'm going to turn this over to Wilda Schach. She has been working with the committee and Civitas on this project or program. So anyway, I'll turn it over to Wilda.
Good evening, council members and staff and those in the audience. Presentation tonight is by Rachel Taylor, who is a project manager with Civitas. And they have been the leading consulting firm in California for forming special districts, special assessment districts. They've helped form eighty-six of California's one-hundred-and-one tourism improvement districts. Representatives of Lake County have been working on this project of forming a TID since last spring. And we're in the final stages of that coming into being. They're working to make contact with property owners, gathering petitions to form the tourism improvement district. Civitas, local jurisdictions, and the county have been working closely with lodging owners who have been serving on a steering committee to bring together the details of the TID. In the audience tonight, there are some property owners, including from Lakeport, and you may want to hear from them. And Michelle Scully, who is the deputy CIO, who's been working and managing this project and working with business owners and managers, is also here. So they're going to make a presentation. The two cities have also been active on the steering committee and in on the conversation, so the cities will be very much a part of this district when it is formed. We don't say if, we say it's going to happen. So I'll let Rachel give her presentation.
My name is Rachel Taylor. I'm a project manager with Civitas Advisors. We, waiting for that slideshow to start up. We are the leading consulting firm in California for forming special districts, as Wilda mentioned. And tonight, we'll be talking about what the tourism improvement district is and how it will affect Lakeport as a city as well, so that you are aware of what this looks like. And then in July, we will see a request for granting consent to the county of Lake to operate the TID within this jurisdiction. So we'll go ahead and move forward. So this is a little bit about Civitas. Civitas is passionate about developing consistent and stable funding sources. So we do this for nonprofit organizations and industry groups throughout, throughout the state and actually throughout the country as well. We are, we have operated and started TIDs in twelve states and are working on the legislation to form them in fourteen more states as well. And so we have successfully formed and renewed eighty-six TIDs, and that is out of the one-hundred-and-one that exist in California. TIDs are sometimes formed as entire counties and sometimes they are formed as just cities as well, depending on the size. So what is a TID? This is a little bit more about Civitas, we'll just... A TID is a stable source of funding for marketing efforts. It is, it is only for increasing occupancy and room rates for lodging businesses. So it is designed to increase tourism to the area directly. And in this case, we are talking about the entire county of Lake. Funds raised through the assessment on lodging stays are used to provide services desired by and directly benefiting the businesses in the district. And that is how a special assessment district works. It can only benefit those paying the assessment, which is why often tourism improvement districts are simply funding marketing efforts to increase tourism to the area. So how a TID works? The hotels pay the assessment. It is collected by the local jurisdiction. In this case, the city of Lakeport would be collecting the TID assessment from the hotels and lodging businesses within the jurisdiction of Lakeport, within the city limits. And then that money is passed on to be managed by the DMO. And DMO stands for a destination marketing organization. It is going to be a nonprofit organization that the TID will form, and that's what the money will be managed through. Characteristics of a TID? It creates a level playing field, so there are no free riders. Everybody pays the same percentage on the room. That way, there is no one that is not paying and still benefiting from it. There's transparency with it. And what we mean by that is that the DMO that manages the TID is also subject to the same regulations that government agencies are. So the Ralph M. Brown Act also is subjected to the TID, as well as the California Public Records Act. There is reliability behind that. What that means is that there will always be that money coming in and that it is only to be used for the, for the benefits that are listed in the plan. It cannot be used for anything else. It is not going into general fund. It does not belong to the government. It only belongs to the DMO. And then the important thing here is though the hotels pay the assessment, it is a pass through to guests, just like TOT is. So here, we did a comparison of counties very near to Lake County and what they have. All of these counties have a TID on top of their TOT. It's important at this moment to note that a TID assessment is not a tax, and that is because it does not go to the government. It goes to those being assessed, with the understanding that the DMO is organized and managed by those who are being assessed. So lodging owners would be on the board of that DMO. You can see here that we've laid out how much TOT each of these counties pays, or in the case of Fairfield, Folsom, Hillsburg, and Lodi, those are cities that are TIDs. And then you can see what their TID percentage is. I did not add it up over here, but they range anywhere from ten percent total up to fifteen percent total. So it really kind of depends on the individual makeup of each county, but you can see that the immediate counties around you are fairly similar to what we will be asking for. What we have proposed for the Lake County TID is a three percent assessment on all room rates. And so that is in addition to the ten percent TOT that is paid in Lake County or in Lakeport, and then nine percent is paid in Clear Lake and Lake County. So who manages the TID? I talked about this for a second, but the Lake County TID will be managed by a new nonprofit called Visit Lake County, California. We have already filed and formed this nonprofit. It is not yet fulfilled with board members or bylaws, so we are working in those stages. Once the actual TID is formed through the county, those will be in place. This is a destination marketing organization, and it will serve as what is known as the Owners Association. They will be charged with managing the funds and implementing programs in accordance with the management district plan. As an aside, I don't explain this, although the management district plan is essentially a business plan. It serves as the plan that the TID must follow for its entire term. It sets in line parameters that the TID must follow. So anything from what the assessment will be to what kind of services it can, it can pay for, in this case, mostly marketing and some admin, and I'll go over that in a second. And then it also lays out what the term will be and other items like that. And then it must follow that management district plan. So when the county goes and informs this, they are essentially approving the management district plan and saying that this will follow the plan as is in front of us.
I just have a question on the, they do an annual report to the board supervisors. Is there a reason why they don't do one to the cities?
And I think, I might have pulled that out of there, but they, they provide the reports to the lead jurisdiction. So in this case, the Lake County is the lead jurisdiction. They can also provide to the individual jurisdictions as well, if requested. It's not required by law, but I don't think there would be any problem in saying, by the way, we would also like you to come and give your annual report to our city council as well, and then they would comply in doing that. It can be added, or it can be something that we can add on to the consent when we do that, if that is something that you want in writing. I think we could, we could make that work. And I think I might have gone over that in the next slide. So like I mentioned, the Owners Association is a private entity and may not be considered a public entity for any purpose. I put that in there so that you understand that those on the board and those representing the nonprofit organization are not public officials in any way, in any capacity. They are, however, subject to government regulations, as I mentioned, like the Brown Act and the California Public Records Act. How does this affect Lakeport? The county of Lake is the lead jurisdiction in the formation. They will be requesting consent from each of the city jurisdictions, Lakeport and Clear Lake, to operate the TID within their jurisdiction on June 19. So June 19th is our date to request the, to request the, you know, we want to, we want to do this, is what we're going to say to Lake County. At the same time, we'll also be requesting that they request consent from each of the cities. That will then in turn require on your consent, a request, granting consent essentially, to the county of Lake. That is to operate the TID within your jurisdiction. What that means is then you will adhere to what is in that management district plan. And really what it is, is that the county and the cities will be responsible for collecting those assessments on either a monthly or a quarterly basis, depending on how you currently collect your TOT. I believe in this city, it is on a monthly basis. And so each lodging business will, when they sign their, they fill out their form to pay their TOT, there will be a new line on that form that also includes the TID. When that payment comes in, it'll be the city's responsibility to take that portion of their payment and give it to the, to the DMO, to the, directly to that nonprofit. So for that, all of that, the county and cities can retain and shall retain a fee equal to two percent of the amount of the assessment collection. And that will help to cover your costs of collection and administration. That's not two percent of total budget, that's two percent of what is collected from each individual jurisdiction. So I didn't include this on the slides, but I can answer questions about what the budget looks like and what all of that percentage is. I also have handouts in the back that are frequently asked questions. I have a bunch of other handouts with me, but I figured I would instead just go ahead and take your questions if I have to.
So you've done this in eighty-six cities, or at least the organization has, and I've always heard to me that transient occupancy tax was exactly what this was supposed to be doing, and then sometime in the dark ages of Lakeport, someone took the money and did something else with it, and that's okay because it's not restricted, but this is totally restricted as opposed to TOT?
Exactly. So TOT, originally when TOT was put into place, the idea was is that it would be used for exactly what it was being assessed on, was to increase tourism to any given area that was, that was assessing on TOT. And I think, I can't recall when, but at some point, it was no longer being used for that, not just in Lakeport or Lake County, but all over the state. TOT funds are not earmarked specifically for tourism. They are general fund. So as a discussion, they go, they go where they go. So that means then that often tourism falls by the wayside. And so for, you know, the lodging owners in, in any given area, it's important to them that they see tourism happen. And so what this money is, is it is only for tourism. And since it has, since it doesn't exist for the cities or the county to use in any way, it is specifically only given to that nonprofit corporation.
Well, it's not really, TOT is not specifically for tourism. It's for also the effects of what the tourism does in your community.
Minimize that.
The police and everything. That's why the general fund, it's not meant to be just a tourism tax.
Because when you have, there's someplace like Las Vegas and you have a million visitors and they're tearing up the streets and doing all that stuff and, you know, increasing police protection, yeah, there's a lot of other things, but it's, yeah, so that makes a lot more sense. So the, you did mention kind of briefly something about it may, the two percent of the three percent could be used for admin and other things like that?
Will be. So that is in regards to the county and city fee.
Collection fees.
Two percent of the three percent goes to each of the individual jurisdictions for collecting and administering. In addition to that, especially with the county, they will be helping them put together an annual report and will have them present in front of the board of supervisors at least once a year, usually after the end of their fiscal year. And so that's also what that is in there for. But yeah, the collection of which and, and, you know, editing the forms and everything like that, we understand that that incurs some kind of cost, so that's where that two percent comes in.
And that's fine, but what about the actual, you know, tourist-related activities, the cost of the management people, that administration? That's going to be something that's going to be clearly defined what their, you know, figure, you know, what their wages are going to be and who these...
Yes, okay. So you're talking...
They're supposed to be a nonprofit, but that doesn't mean they can't draw, you know, attributable wages.
So what we have set aside for that is twenty percent of that three percent is for administration and operations. And that is laid out in the management district plan, what that involves. But I have here, it shall be utilized for administrative staffing costs, office costs, advocacy, which is a huge part of having somebody on staff of one of these DMOS is to advocate for this DMO and for tourism to the area, to be a physical presence that attends various events and meetings and city council hearings. And then other general administrative costs such as insurance, legal and accounting fees. So that's what that twenty percent is earmarked for each year. And then the, the rest of the budget, seventy-five percent of that goes to sales and marketing. And then we set aside a three percent for contingency and reserve. That is like contingency, it's just a gray bucket, just as a just in case. It can also be used for the renewal of this district, and that's something that I didn't talk about, but this district is only set for five years. That's all that you can set a new district for is five years. It's a maximum term. At the end of that five years... At the end of that five years, it can be renewed for up to 10 years. So when that five years comes up, we will actually do this process all over again. And this process being that we would redevelop an entire plan again with the DMO now in place and having operated for almost four years at that point. And then we would readjust and see if maybe there was something we needed to change, because that will be the opportunity to change all things.
What would your board look like, the nonprofit?
We discussed this, and maybe Michelle might be able to recall that a little bit more, but what we decided was either between seven and nine board members, even up to 11, but a majority of them would have to be lodging business owners. That is required so that a lodging business owner who is the one paying the assessment can never be outnumbered, essentially. We also talked about having one seat for the tribes, as they have talked about wanting to participate. They cannot be assessed, as they are not part of the jurisdiction, but they have been very interested in being a part on a private contract, which would occur after the TID is formed. And then we also talked about having a seat for each of the jurisdictions, or someone who could be representative of the jurisdictions, and then also somebody who's interested in tourism in the area. So that could be somebody from the Wine Growers Association, someone kind of in that avenue that would also be an important voice to have.
Can you give me kind of an example of what the 75% would be paying for?
Yeah, so in that 75% currently looks at $255,000 a year, and what that will be used for is just marketing and sales. And so what we talk about in tourism districts with marketing is very large campaigns. So, and it'll change each year. Within the first year or two, really what you're looking at doing is setting up a brand and a logo and a website, photography, things like that, that kind of get you on your feet. And then beyond that, you're looking at purchasing very large media buys, things like billboards, print, and multiple publications throughout the Bay Area would probably be ideal for this area. And then also radio and TV. The thing is, is that it would be something that the board would decide with whoever they hire to do the marketing. And when we talked earlier about the administrative costs, we, you know, kind of didn't really talk about it, but there would very likely be either a part-time or full-time staff person and executive director that would be charged with not only managing the day-to-day operations, but also potentially would be the person that would do some of this marketing, or they would hire a firm to do the marketing. And I know, like, you know, $255,000 is a lot of money. It goes very quickly when you talk about marketing, when you talk about very large media buys. So that money could really put a dent in that kind of work, you know, in really driving traffic to this area.
Since it's a county-wide program, how will that work with the two cities? You know, will any of the marketing be specific to the cities?
It can be, and so the way that this, the way that this works, because it is county-wide, what the board will be charged with doing is making sure that any services that are rendered essentially benefit everyone. And so if they are going to specifically call out the city, the city of Lakeport, it would be ideal to also call out the city of Clear Lake and other smaller areas within the unincorporated county. And so it's kind of one of those things, we need to do your due diligence to say, okay, you know, we put a little bit of money towards an ad buy that's showing what to do in the city of Clear Lake. Let's make sure we also show what you can do in the city of Lakeport, or what you can do in Kelseyville, what you can also do in Upper Lake. And that way you have kind of, you know, made sure that you've done everything you can. And there are other ways to specifically list each and every lodging business, and that way you make sure that you are calling out those things. But it will be used to, you know, market directly to the area. One thing we didn't talk about necessarily was that we do have support from the county and from the tribes, and there is the possibility that there will be additional funds that will be added into this through private contracts. That is obviously still being worked out, and we don't know anything number-wise, but the hope there is that once you have this entity formed, this entity that can represent the county in tourism, that there will be other groups that they can work with and kind of partner with in those situations.
So you have more buying power to do.
And then also, as a, you know, as a DMO, you would also have the ability to take in sponsorships, to do, to do large events, things like, you know, for instance, you see Amgen going through, like San Jose and Morgan Hill, they help pay for the cost of those major events through their DMOs, so.
Any other questions? Open up to the public, the public comment? Any questions? Come on up, Suzanne.
Here we go. Suzanne Hamlinis. The only question I've got is, this is forming a district, so does this have to go to LAFCO?
It doesn't.
It doesn't?
LAFCO approves.
I'm sorry, what?
LAFCO doesn't have jurisdiction over these tourism and business improvement.
Okay, thank you. Thank you guys for spending so much time on this tonight. I'm Michelle Scully with the County of Lake. Rachel did a great presentation. It's a big, giant process to do this. We've been talking about it since last April, as Margaret will recall. There are people in this room tonight that I'd like to have a chance to maybe say hello lodging business owners and why they've supported this process. Rachel talked about a lot of the dynamics of it, but a few things, the small things I'd like to mention are, it's been really wonderful to see the county and the cities working together to do something that I think is long overdue and very forward-thinking, and I think it will be transformative. And another thing too is having conversations with lodging business owners all around the county, which doesn't always happen. And so it's been really cool to see those conversations occurring and the energy growing from that, and I think it's a good thing. So if you have any questions for me, I'll take them, but otherwise, we have some great lodging business owners here that I think it'd be great to let them have a chance to say something. Thank you all.
Thanks, Michelle.
My husband and I are the owners of the Tallman Hotel in Upper Lake. We have lots of rooms, we could take a lot more guests at our property. And the last year and a half, we've done a lot of marketing, and we have found that the only way to market the Tallman is to also market the county. And with only 17 rooms, we don't have the resources to market the county. And there's no property here that does have the resources to do that. It really is very expensive, even if you don't do print, or, I mean, $250,000 does sound like a lot of money, but even if you do social media, even if you're doing a lot of the digital things, it's expensive, and you need professionals to help you do it. We've discovered that. There are some wonderful professionals out there on a consulting basis that we could retain if there was money to do it. So I think the TID is a wonderful idea, we wholeheartedly support it. And we haven't had a hotel association. It's something that will provide a forum for all property owners to express, you know, their thoughts and opinions. And in addition to providing resources, you know, to market those properties that we really just haven't had before. So anyway, Bernie and I are behind it, and we really hope it goes forward. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Lisa Wilson, I'm the general manager of Clear Lake Campground in the city of Clear Lake, and I have already submitted my petition in support for the TID. I'm also on the steering committee, working with Michelle and Rachel. So we have a great story to tell tourists here about Lake County, and we need dedicated professionals and staff and a dedicated budget to tell that story. There's a lot to love about Lake County, and looking at, for my property, a 9% TOT plus a 3% assessment, it's called percent, and I do not expect any pushback from my guests to pay that extra 3%. I believe they won't even notice it, they're paying that in other places that they're traveling to and spending their money up before they come here. We want to win here in Lake County, and to do that, we have to control our own destiny. And I think this assessment district will be that.
Thank you.
Is there anybody from Lakeport Hotel here that might want to say something?
My name is Cheryl Smith. My husband and I have a short-term rental called the Carrie's House. We've been in favor of this idea for several years, we've been with it mammoth, hence our action. I was excited to be with Michelle called, and I signed petition also.
I realize I didn't explain the petition phase to everyone here. We, part of the phase of getting this to the county, to our resolution of intention to form it, is to have 50% or more, or plus more, of all hotel owners, all lodging owners in all of Lake County, including the two cities, to sign in favor of forming this district. That is weighted by how much they would pay. So we have taken TOT data from, actually a former fiscal year, and have determined what each hotel owner would pay, and then have weighted their petition in that amount. And so what we have done then is gotten signatures in favor of this. We need 50 plus 1% in order to go to the county. Right now, we are at 46.1%, I believe, as of just today. So we're almost there, we have about another week and a half, I believe, to complete that. So that's what we are working on right now. So also, if there are any Lakeport lodging owners in here who have not signed the petition yet, I have petitions with me, and I would gladly take a signature today. And, you know, that's, that's just kind of our, our way of forming this that's laid out in the law, is that once we get those signatures of evidence of it being in favor, we then go to the lead jurisdiction, and we ask to form the district. And then what they do is they send out a notice to all lodging owners, letting them know that this is occurring, and that also there will be a public meeting, which I believe is July?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. And that's at the, at the actual county. And then that public meeting, that is not a consent meeting, but it is an open public forum. And then there would be the resolution of formation, and that occurs on August 7th, I believe, if that is Tuesday. And that would be when the TID is officially formed, and the board of supervisors would vote to form that if there was not a large amount of opposition. And generally, we're looking for opposition in more than 50%. So that's why we do the petition over 50%. That's an explanation of that.
Are there any other comments?
I could just say that business people are always battling against trying to get, you know, the maximum amount of money for their marketing budget. And anytime that you can get some kind of solidarity in some kind of a program, it's so different than when you're sitting as a public official and people are talking about taxes, and they're whining and all that kind of stuff. And you say, well, you know, it really takes money, you know, to clean the streets and to provide protection and to have sewer and water and all that. And I know you don't want to pay any of that, but, you know, it's critical and it's essential. But marketing in a county like ours, where we're all small business operators, we don't have a big, cannot die harbor anymore, and getting it together and doing something like this is something that'll give us so much more buying power, and I think it's a move in the right direction. I totally agree with the amount that's added on, probably wanting to be seen other places that, you know, much higher in other areas when you walk in. It's not unusual to go into a Las Vegas hotel with a $49 special and go to checkout, and it's $100 in your life, and what happened? So that's a non-issue, but I think it's a great idea, and a good move forward in getting professionals in here to do it, because quite frankly, most of us, I know Lynn and all of us others, we're so busy running our business, we would love to go out and, you know, market more, but we're too busy, like, you know, sweeping the parking lot and doing, you know, all the new shows, so this is going to be a good program, and I'd love to see it move forward.
Well said, Kenny.
All right. Nothing else? Thank you.
I like the comment that Michelle said too, about just getting all the hotels together in a forum, to be able to share, I think that's great.
That's great.
We don't need to take any action on this, right? I didn't think so. Well, thank you very much for your presentation, sounds very exciting.
This will be coming back to council on the 17th of July.
Okay.
Approval. Come here for approval?
They just left the county first, and then they come here, correct?
Yes, so the resolution of intention occurs at the county on June 19th, and then we will come here. And so at the time the resolution of intention occurs at the county, they will also consent on a resolution requesting consent from each of the city jurisdictions. And so then at Lakeport and at Clear Lake, there will be separate city council hearings, where on the consent docket will be a resolution granting consent to the County of Lake to operate the TID within the jurisdiction.
So we do have a schedule for the 17th, and we'll be back here.
Wonderful. Well, once again, thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, we have the Finance Director, Solar and Energy Efficiency Retrofit Project Financing.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. The purpose of this agenda item is to review, discuss, and receive a presentation regarding the financing part of the solar energy efficiency project, and to direct staff to hold up a public hearing on June 19th. As I'm sure you guys can recall, the city's been working diligently on this solar project for several years, and as of April 17th, when you last received a presentation from Optera Energy on the specifics of the project, we have been diligently working on putting together the financing for the project. Eric Scriven is here from NHA to go over the highlights in a short presentation. It has been somewhat of a challenging financing deal due to there being three credits involved. Being a public offering, we do have a meeting scheduled with S&amp;P on Friday to get the credits rated. And then on the 19th, we will be bringing back the legal documents in front of the council for approval. We were, the intention was to have this meeting here to discuss any of the issues with the financing before that meeting, as Margaret will be on vacation and not be available. So we kind of split it into two items, so we can have a good discussion at this time. So I'll turn it over to Eric for the presentation.
NHA is our financial advisor, we have to check with. All about finance.
Good evening, Mayor, code Kevin, and councilmembers. We have a short presentation, just want to give an opportunity for Q and A, and have Kevin and Margaret and Nick weigh in on various aspects as well. The documents will be coming back to you two weeks from now. Cameron List will be here to walk through any more detail as we get into this. Put together a summary, our discussion outline. So you've heard all this before, I think in April, from NG, formerly Optera. This has been a project I think that Kevin has been guiding. This has been a project I think that Kevin has been guiding primarily. I, I know that we've separated into three buckets, if you will, general fund, water, and wastewater funds. But if there's any questions that's engendered again about what is being installed, I'm not the guy to tell you, it would be Kevin. So you can see we've, we've checked marks what is going where, and then that drives the size of each, each of the three funds' share of the transaction. So the, the project cost is $4.48 million. As you can see, it's divided, the largest portion is on the wastewater site or near, adjacent to it. We have savings produced. We put some of that into the staff report. These numbers were run last, last week. We took a conservative view. We used a non-rated transaction, and we used as a comparison NG's recommended 5% growth rate on PG&E. That's the comparison, how you sort of gauge this, gauge this. As I think you probably have heard in the past, Nick and Margaret really wanted to kick that a little bit, make sure, you know, so we, we hit it, took it down to 4% growth just to see if we still were penciling. And we were 3% as of last week, which is quite a bit lower than what NG says it thinks it will be with a lot of data to back it up. Did not work on a non-rated transaction. We think we're going to get a rated transaction. We've been working on the credit presentation, and we look forward to presenting that on Friday to the standard course. As you can see, the payback is shorter on the wastewater, 22 years. This is going to be a 30-year transaction. 25 years is the payback, oh, not, that's the comparison, the useful life of the assets is 30-year comparison. But each of the three funds, you can see the term of each of those respective transactions within the overall transaction. So really, the savings are fairly narrow. That's the way we're structuring it during the 22, 25, and 25-year terms for each of those. But then, you know, you, there's no debt payment after that, and that's when you see a lot of the savings on, on the three transactions. So I'm going to play lawyer just quickly and to let you know that, again, we have three individual transactions, but we bundle those up into one transaction. So each of those have a payment stream that goes to the municipal financing agency, and the municipal financing agency is the entity, the issuer of the bonds that go, are purchased by bondholders. So as you can see, each, each of the funds have their defined payment based on their amount of improvements that they're installing. Any questions? And we're going to get to the legal documents, which I think is the primary reason to schedule, which we'll talk about again on another slide. But this is the schedule. We have a rating presentation on Friday. Rating should be received prior to the 19th, the next city council meeting, when you're approving legal documents, when everything's tidied up in the preliminary official statement, which is the disclosure document from the issuer, the municipal financing agency, to the, the bond market. When we have that all set and everything is accurate and right, we'll release it to the underwriter, they'll market, they'll start marketing the bonds. We anticipate the, the bond sale, where they'll actually accept, take in orders and try to lower the rates to the lowest possible interest rate on that particular day, would be later this month, on the 27th. And then from that point then, the, the city would award the bonds to the underwriter at those interest rates if they're acceptable. And there would be a bond purchase agreement that would be signed on that date. And then we spend about two, actually, three weeks, two and a half, three weeks, we're trying to work around vacations a little bit here to, to close the transaction on June 12th. July 12th, sorry.
You know what the bond rate would be, like, if it was to A? Now you're trying to get a lower rate. What would the interest rate be for that bond?
What was our TIC? I didn't put that statistic in here. Rates are really good.
It was around 4%.
Yeah. 4%. If you look at everything together as a whole, we call that the true interest cost, which factors in the issuance cost, the fees, and all of that.
Is that a non-rated one?
That was non-rated. We were using non-rated. We wanted to, in the staff report, try to under-promise and over-deliver. It was usually the way we liked to do things.
Wouldn't be as conservative as possible. That's why we're trying to see if this would work, 3%. I mean, like you said, NG had a...
3% growth rate.
3% growth rate, because NG has logged down the backup at 5%. But just to be really comfortable, we want to see this break even at 3% so that we have...
We're trying to get a better rating, so that our bond rate would be going down.
Right. You don't think we're going to give bond insurance, which wraps it to a higher credit rating because of some of the particulars of the, of the transaction, particularly the, the lease component on the general fund piece? We didn't want to pledge any assets, just the equipment itself. So that's why we're not, we're, we're not using real property assets of the city. We're going to use the equipment and have the lease for that. That, the insurance companies, we feel, are not going to like that. But we're gonna, we're gonna talk to them about it and see if we can convince them. So two weeks from now, Cameron Lees will be here to guide you through it again, if you like. As we said, it, it is a pretty complex transaction for, you know, for a $4.5 million deal. It's because we have the three payment sources. So you have, you have a couple of resolutions, one from the city, one from the agency. The lease agreement relates to the general fund portion. There's a lease, kind of a lease-leaseback with the, between the city and the agency. And then the installment sale agreements, that's the legal type of document that you need to use for the water and wastewater fund, similar to the lease, if you will. It creates a payment stream, a security stream, between the city and the agency that then can be bonded, capitalized, bonded against for sale of bonds to investors. And then the indenture trust wraps it all together. It's, it's really the foundation of the bond security that establishes all of the parameters of the flow of funds and the deposits and how everything's supposed to work, protection of the bondholders. And the preliminary official statement, you've seen this before, I'm sure, in some of the other transactions, that's the disclosure document, very important document, everyone, we all need to read that, make sure that there's no errors, because that goes out to the marketplace to sell the bonds. And the bond purchase agreement is the agreement between, in this instance, the agency is selling the bonds, but agency and city are one and the same. So the, that's between the agency and the underwriter. On the date of sale, there's no commitment to do the transaction until that bond purchase agreement on June 27th is what we're projecting. On that date, it gets executed by, signed by the underwriter authorized representative and city authorized representative. Who will be Kevin or...
Kevin, Kevin, the acting city.
Okay. And then the continuing disclosure certificate, as we all know, you have to report annually after, after the sale on some of the key credit information, like accounts for the two utilities, audits for all three, and to keep that kind of thing. That's a very important document as well. Cameron will go through all of that again if you want to. So are there any questions on sort of the legal documents or basic structure?
So we formed the municipal financing agency in order to kind of be able to go through this process by taking the enterprise funds and put it with general fund and be like the overarching agency.
Precisely.
So that we could do that, and then we can manage these funds and take it out of, you know, enterprise, enterprise, and then general fund, and funnel it in and do it in a way that's cost-effective and takes care of the whole thing all at once.
Precisely. As opposed to three separate small deals that would really wouldn't want to, you probably have three small direct placement banks.
Higher rates.
Would do it. Higher rates, probably, yeah. Again, this is the schedule that I outlined before. And the team is the team that's worked for the city on the last couple of transactions, and everyone's been, you know, on their way pretty well. We've got a pretty good credit document together. I think the financing plan is good. It's changed quite a bit from 2015, when we started, and I think it's improved and it's, it's ready to go. So glad to answer any questions.
Any questions from the public?
So Mr. Mayor, I've moved a direct staff to hold a public hearing for approval of required resolutions and legal documents.
Seven.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is passed? Up there. So do you believe it's Nick again?
It is. Good evening again. This item is the 1819 budget adoption. We're asking the city council to adopt the operating and capital expenditure budgets for the 1819 fiscal year and the associated resolution. And in the staff report, we highlighted the city manager message. So I hope you guys all had a chance to read through that. And I have prepared basically this, a very similar presentation to what we saw at the budget workshop. It's shortened a little bit, and I should be able to go right through some of the stuff and focus on the highlight section. Just to go over the budget schedule very quickly, here we are in June at the budget hearing. We had our budget workshop last month. Back in March, we had the strategic planning with council, and between then and now, we've been, myself and department has been busy working on their department budgets. Really quickly, just to explain the document a little bit, it's a very long document. Some of the key elements are the city manager's budget message, and the, there's some summary data, including the capital improvement project listing. There's fund detail for general fund, sewer fund, and all other, on special revenue funds. Department detail budgets and some appendices in the back. Items are presented by major category. The revenues are primarily categorized by taxes, charge for services, and grants. Expenditures are classified by their natural classification, meaning salaries and benefits, operations, loans and grants, debt service, and capital outlays. How to read the, the fund information, as I mentioned, the revenues come by sources and expenditures by class. It also includes two years of historical data, the 1718 original budget, amended budget, the 1819 proposed budget, and then two years of projections. In the department section of the document, it also lists the 1718 accomplishments and the 1819 department's goals and objectives, along with the specific dollar budget details. Again, some key pages to note, some sections, the city measure message on page one, the citywide summary on page 16, general fund summary on page 17, measure I and measure Z details, and again, the capital improvement program. The, the approach the city takes in developing the budget is a collaborative approach, utilizing strategic opportunities, primarily the, using city council priorities, which are established at the goal planning session. This year, there's, as last, there's a continued focus on project completion, emphasis on efficiencies and service to the, service delivering enhancements. Here you'll see the top 11, added 11, WiFi for downtown, council priorities for 1819. The city investments are prioritized in primarily the three following things, operating efficiencies and cost control, infrastructure and capital, and a focus in economic development. And so the highlights are very similar to, the budget is very similar to what was presented at the workshop. The one change that was made was to add a $12,000 expenditure item to the economic development budget for the Dickens Fair attractions. That's the single change that has been made since it was presented last. And so there's still $13.1 million in budget revenues and $16.4 million in budget expenditures. Of that $16.4, $5 million is personnel, nearly $4 million operations, 1.6 in debt service, and almost $6 million in capital improvement projects. And just to note, that the amount of the expenditures over the revenues, which was about $3.3 million, is project-related, and these revenues to fund these projects were received primarily, were primarily received in prior years. Like before, there's some more detail on the general fund amount, the water fund amount and the sewer fund amount that, that helped create that difference of $3 million. The majority being this $2.5 million in budgeted storm repairs, of which we've received, and will receive the rest of, insurance proceeds totaling $2.5 million in the current year.
Yes, but they're received this year, but they're expended next year, that's why there's like a deficit in the budget status.
Here you'll see a list of capital improvement projects. It's a quite lengthy list. Some key things to highlight are the lecture of Bullmord ER project, the eight ships signs and striping throughout the city, paving on First Street, Second Street. The Hartley project is set to, the engineering is set to begin this year, paving on South Main and Lakeport Boulevard. Excuse me, paving on South Main and Eleventh Street. I'm not sure why Eleventh Street isn't on there. Additionally, some, some new marked vehicles for the police department, security fence at the police department, some public safety camera systems at Library Park, along with multiple various projects, including the storm repair projects, which are the, the seawall.
Yeah, biggest.
Being the biggest. There are a couple personnel additions and subtractions. We, at least, at least the meeting at the workshop, the meeting was approved to include the additional FTE for the EMT position. Approval of this budget would allow for a half, and half an FTE and part-time help at Public Works. Here's the half FTE at Public Works and the one EMT position, and these are reductions in pool staff and... And these are reductions in pool staff and reserve officer, part-time reserve officer, who will be filled with volunteer employees.
So we get a negative how much?
1.5.
Yeah, 1.5 less.
The detail on the general fund, it's actually a surplus of about 15, $15,000. This reconciliation here is the estimated surplus from the current year after some adjustments have been made and projects have been carried forward, projects that aren't going to be completed in the current year that are being moved over to next year. Carnegie Library being the biggest of about $160,000, which could be reduced depending on the amount of program income received in TDPG between now and project completion. Depending on loan payouts, there could be some more available resources to help reduce that. So the budget deficit for 1819 is this, is $218,233, which is carrying forward projects. The general fund budget has a strong, very strong focus in public safety and roads, additionally human capital, project execution, cost control, and economic development, specifically implementation of the lakefront plan and hotel feasibility studies. A quick comparison of department budgets in the general fund from prior year to current year. You'll see the road and infrastructure budget has increased nearly $4,000. And that's a direct result of measure, of measure Z revenues being used to fund road projects. Graphically, the same information. The water enterprise fund does remain stable. The revenues are up over the last several years from rate restructuring. There's no operating deficits. However, raising personnel costs and operating costs are limiting the fund's ability to budget capital projects. And just like the reconciliation I showed on the general fund, the estimated actual deficit for the current year, 1718, is about $250,000 less than originally budgeted. Again, due to carrying forward projects which are not going to be completed in the current year. Replacing the carbon at the treatment facility being the largest of 120,000. And so when the 1819 budget deficit is 164, add back the projects of 165, it's a very mean surplus. Sewer enterprise is also in a stable position from the rate increases. It has a little more cushion as far as reserves go than the water fund. Again, there's no operating deficit. However, capital expenditures are being limited by rising costs. Similar story on the reconciliation here. The cameraman being rolled over to 1819 of 260,000 is the biggest piece. So a budget deficit in 1819 of 275, 280 of which is projects being carried forward to generate a surplus of $4,000. Really quickly, property tax distribution. Countywide shows the city receiving a very minimal portion. Sales tax being a little bit better, still about one-third of what the state general fund collects from the city of Lakeport sales tax. Department detail for the 1819 budget, this is citywide. Total column here shows total departments and how much is being appropriated to each department. Uses of measure I, I made the correction on this side from last time, there is $557,000, or $557 going towards the $3,000 of the pool. The majority of measure I is being used to support police and roads. Measure Z, very small. Some key projects to note in the measure Z are the purchases of police vehicles, which I talked about earlier, a pickup chassis for the road crew, the public safety camera system at Library Park, street repair materials, upgraded tables, traction receptacles at Library Park, $30,000 of a skip loader that will be used by the road crew and shared with the utility departments, the South Main surface treatments, the 11th Street surface treatments, and also taking a little bit of money and saving it, taking the $30,000 surplus and covering it for the remainder of the South Main Street project, which would be set to occur in 1920.
This time, take any questions?
So Doug, the long awaited HSIP traffic striping money that people have been commenting and asking and requesting is finally coming into the, into your hands? And it sounds like it's quite a bit, quite a bit of money. Is it going to be able to do an adequate job?
Yeah, our HSIP funding that we, the grant that we got is for $500,000. And so that is going to do all of our arterials and collectors, which is basically all of the main roads. They're, you know, they won't do any residential roads, but it will do all of our arterial and collectors, which is where we have the majority of our traffic. So that would be Main Street, Lake Shore, High Street, Lakeport Boulevard, 11th Street. And so what the real push is now, and what is going to be coming to council next, is our pavement maintenance program, and which is going to be a, which is a rubberized chip with a micro surface on it for 11th Street to Main Street, from the, on 11th Street, from 29 to Main Street, and then South Main Street from Lakeport Boulevard to Peckham Court. And we got to get, you know, where the balancing act is, is we want to get that done before the striping program because that's going to save us in the neighborhood of probably about $150,000 to $160,000 that we would have to spend to stripe those projects if we don't, you know, balance it with the HSIP. So a lot of exciting, a lot of exciting things going on, a lot of road projects. And I'm really hopeful that this is, Lakeport can, you know, really see what's happening with their support of us in measure I and measure Z and that we're really doing something with it to try to help them and to keep our roads in good condition and make this a community that, you know, you can drive your rig on and not have it rattle everywhere you go.
Well, I think it is important to note that the striping, that we've been all kind of patient with this thing, but it would be better to wait and do it once than to paint them and then do them again. And I know there was some letters and I've had former city employees talk to me about different locations up on, you know, near South Main, they're at the intersection with the grocery outlet, how you could barely tell one lane from another, and you've been very patient. And I guess it's going to pay off and hopefully this balancing act will work out, but that's good that we got that grant, so.
One thing, maybe this is the wrong time to talk about, did we get a new formula for the roads or are we, the stuff that you're going to put on 11th Street, is it the same formula?
We're not putting any asphalt down on 11th or on South Main. George, it's a different kind of treatment. And so it uses different oils. This, the actual base course is going to be a rubberized, so we're not going to have those, those issues. The other paving that's, that's going on town, we've worked with granite and, you know, we're trying to change the met, the matrix of the material a little bit because we can't change the oil. Okay, it's not like we can just go out and buy a different oil. There is not a different oil to buy at this point in time. So to answer your question, we're doing everything we can to stabilize that, but right now, that's the only pickup for sale.
By the way, Margaret, I loved the budget message from the city manager and I really enjoyed the photographs and most of the other minutia, I really did not enjoy them. There should be more pictures.
Less than first.
I liked the graphs and charts, they were informative, but a lot of that fine print at my age is like, you know. Anyway, that was a great budget message and I think it, all of the things we've accomplished and the things that we're going to do, it seems like we've just been right on the line and we've been hitting all of our marks and making all our numbers. And I think that the extra work that we put into the, to the budget workshops every year and the extra time that the staff puts everything together so that we are all on the same page. It looks like it's all working and it's working really well. We're seeing the solar thing finally come to fruition. So I'm feeling really good about the job that city staff and department heads and the councils do, city managers do.
Thank you. My staff works really hard and they're always real busy and they hate to even come in and say, "We have one more mayor." Great staff, so thank you.
All right, is there any public comment? Okay, we'll close public comment. Any further discussion? All right, if there's no further discussion. Mr. Mayor, move to adopt the recommended budget for the city of Lakeport and its component units authorize the city manager to expend the appropriation found therein for the fiscal year 2018-19. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All that work.
All that work. Good job, Nick.
I get to look at it for another year, I don't know.
You better be looking at it for a year. So next we have Nick with the GAN limit.
Yeah, could you mean again? I'm back. Well, we pulled this item off of the consent agenda there. Please note an error in the background section of the staff report. It indicates that the city's fiscal year 1819 budget was approved by the city council on June 19th of 2017. That should actually be today. Besides that correction, the GAN appropriation limit is adopted by the city council annually in conjunction with the budget. It is a formula set forward by the California Department of Finance, essentially to limit the amount of appropriations that the city could spend had we had the resources related to the general fund. The good news about the calculation is that the cost of living is, has went up, well, I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing. For the calculation purposes, it's a good thing because the appropriations increased. It went up 3.67 percent. The population change in the city, which is always a good thing, went up 0.18 percent. And so the calculation allows the city to expand 12,309,294. The general fund budget is 5.3 million. So we are appropriating 43.17 percent of what we could appropriate, appropriate had we had the resources.
Right, right.
We need more money and we can spend it.
So we, we could spend $12 million, but really we can only spend $5 million because all we have is $5 million.
Correct.
Fair enough. Any, any questions?
Get it, get the formulas of it.
Got you. The max we can spend is 12 million.
Right.
We'll get right on that. Any public, any comment up here? Any public comment? All right, I'll bring it back for discussion and more motion.
Just approve the GAN spending limit that was previously pulled off the consent agenda?
Yeah, the suggested motion, the suggested motion in the staff report's correct.
I'll make a motion to approve the appropriations limit of 12,000, 12,309,294 in fiscal year 2018-19 for the city of Lakeport and adopt the proposed resolution.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we are on to Doug, bid award. Award a construction contract to VSS International Incorporated for the 2018 Pavement Preservation Program.
Correct. Mayor Protan, council members, before you, I can just shout, I got a big voice. So before you, as a request to award the... Test, test.
There you go.
Oh, there we go. Before you, as a request to award the bid for the 2018 Pavement Preservation Program, which is the 11th Street and the South Main Street Cape Seal projects. The low bidder was Valley. And there was one other bidder that bid our project, their bid was 391,961 dollars. VSS, which stands for Valley Slurry Seal, their, their bid was 331,000. And so therefore making them a little better, there were no irregularities found in their bid. And so we're asking the council to approve awarding this contract to VSS International Inc. and direct the city manager to sign the contract.
Thank you. Any questions?
So when, when your engineer's estimate comes out higher than what the bid comes in, does that, does that give the engineer in the city a warm fuzzy feeling or is that...
He was very nice.
Because I wasn't, I noticed that those numbers are always dangerously close, but usually they're a little high and it's nice to see that someone comes in below, but then you can see that they were totally within the, almost the average if you take the low and the high. I mean, that engineer's estimate was right on the money during there, so congratulations on that.
One question I do have to ask is, these two companies, are any of them local?
There is no one local, George, that does this type of application.
Does I have to ask?
No, no, that's absolutely not a problem in answering that. We had, Kelfra Oil owns Windsor Fuels, which is the closest company that does this type of work. They're located in basically Santa Rosa area. They were invited to, to bid. Their workload right now, they just felt that they, you know, couldn't provide us the service that we were asking for, and so they declined to bid because of their workload.
Any public comment? All right, any further discussion? Motion?
I move to award the construction contract to VSS International Inc. for the 2018 Pavement Preservation Program.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Next, we have the city manager lead meeting voting delegates, nominate voting delegates for the League of California Cities Annual Conference, BL, September 12 through 14, 2018 in Long Beach, California.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protan and council. Each year, the League of California Cities have their annual conference and this year it's scheduled for September 12th through the 14th in Long Beach. And each year, they, at the annual business meeting, the... they, um, at the annual business meeting, um, the, uh, the delegates will be voting on policy matters, uh, at that, at that, uh, meeting, and, um, each city, uh, delegates a representative for them to be their voting member and an alternate, um, I think they will ask for two alternates on this, uh, first and second alternate also, uh, for the Friday, the 14th, for the business meeting. And the items that will be voted on will be coming back to council before the, um, before the conference so that the council can, uh, give their direction to the voting member on the, on the items.
I did speak to Mayor Turner today, and she would be happy to be the voting delegate.
That's who I put there.
So, I would move to nominate, um, Mayor Turner as the voting delegate and Pro-Town Barnes as the first alternate, and Councilmember Parlet as the second alternate voting delegate for the League of California Cities Annual Conference to be held September 12th through 14th, 2018 in Long Beach, California.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Mayor Turner is the voting delegate? But he has said first.
Yeah, I'm sure there's gonna be a problem with her not being...
Yeah, yeah, that's...
It's how she's surprised.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so now we're on to our public hearing portion, the USDA application. To hold a public hearing and authorize the city manager to submit an application for USDA through the community facilities loan and grant program in the amount of $495,000 for the purpose of constru, construction, for the purpose of con, constructing a sewer main extension to serve the proposed 24-unit affordable multifamily housing project located at 1255 Martin Street.
Thank you, Mayor Pro-Town. Um, as the council's aware, it's been a stated goal of the Community Development Department and of your council for the past couple of years to, uh, complete this second phase of affordable housing, uh, project currently in, in the form of a 24-unit affordable multifamily housing project. Um, we began this process in 2015, um, and we're actually, the city, together with the applicant, were awarded a home grant in the amount of 4.5 million dollars for the construction of that project. Um, we additionally, uh, the city, as well as the applicant, applied for some CDBG funding for the construction of some of the off-site improvements, chief among them being, uh, the sewer main extension, uh, to tie the project in, uh, from where the existing sewer main exists at the, uh, corner of, uh, Bevins and Martin Street. Uh, we have been unsuccessful the past two years in obtaining, uh, funding through CDBG. Uh, we've reached out, uh, to other funding, uh, areas as well as the, um, the project applicant has kind of looked at their pro forma and tried to change their costs as best as possible to keep this project up and running. Uh, we're very grateful, uh, to the traction that we've got with USDA. Uh, we provided them with, um, a general funding request, and they provided us with a, uh, letter authorizing us to apply, uh, for funding, um, at the end of April. Uh, the holding of this public hearing is a requirement to, uh, formally submit an application, and that's what you have before you this evening, is a request for that 495,000 to construct the sewer main. Unfortunately, USDA does not allow us, um, their, their public facilities grant would only be eligible for the sewer funding, uh, not some of the other off-site improvements that were mainly, uh, sidewalk and some other things, but working very closely with the applicant, and, um, they provided a, uh, kind of scaled down, tried to change their numbers up to make it possible. Uh, the planning commission at their last meeting in May approved a modification to the original proposal. Um, it reduces some development items, um, mainly, uh, covered parking, um, over some of the spaces out there, um, but I'm very happy that they are maintaining, um, a pedestrian access linking, uh, this site at 1255 Martin Street, uh, down along Martin Street to the existing sidewalk, um, in front of their other facility, their Bellevista, a little further down Martin Street. So, it's coming together, it's been quite a process, um, we've, we're very hopeful that USDA is gonna, uh, provide us with some sort of favorable ratio of, uh, grant to loan. Prior to any authorization of that, this item would come back, obviously, to the council for your formal approval of whatever that ratio of funding, uh, tends to be.
Kevin.
Does the water go all the way up there?
Yes, water already currently exists going up that direction.
Is it way past the sheriffs, or just do the sheriffs?
I don't know how far it goes up Martin Street, but it, it definitely goes to the project boundary. I think it goes all the way out to the city limits.
Okay, it does. Yeah. And so, the sewer would just go to the end of where these apartments are, multifamily housing would go to?
That's correct. And the, the important thing to note too is this is a 10.5 acre property, uh, that's owned by, um, by Pacific Homes. Um, this first development aspect is only accounting for about three acres of that. It is their intent to, to also, uh, do some future elements, um, you know, other affordable housing types at that location. So, this project not only, you know, the sewer line is not only going to serve these existing 24 units, but the hope is that it's gonna, uh, provide access to additional affordability and affordable housing opportunities which we know that we're in desperate need of.
Are they leaning towards seniors, or are they leaning towards...
Unfortunately, a lot of it comes down to chasing what funding's available, and that changes from year to year, um, but, uh, I know on their radar is additional senior housing, um, you know, workforce housing and, and additional, um, multifamily housing. So, they're all on their radar.
Okay, thank you.
So, Kevin, when you, um, have the permission to, uh, submit an application and compete against other providers, um, that would be something that would be, um, you'd be waning heavily on the fact that it's not only, uh, the sewer improvements are also going to be possibly utilized in numerous other ways in future years, would that be something that would be additionally added there? You just say, "Oh, we're gonna do these improvements, and we're looking for, you know, to get this, these 24 units," but potentially, if you can, you know, only, you know, uh, putting together three, three acres out of a potential of 10, there's a lot of additional space that would be utilized later on if we were to get that. Is there any kind of a feel that you guys normally have before something like this goes out?
Well, there's a lot of effect, people might have voted on that today. There's a lot of, uh, legislation and, um, measures on the ballot to provide more affordable housing, so the state's been trying to create more funding for affordable housing, cause they have to be subsidized, they couldn't afford to build them if they're not heavily subsidized by several different, um, sources. So, uh, yeah, I think the, it looks good for the future that, uh, and especially if, if we have, uh, property that's ready to go, has the sewer, the water, and has utilities to it that, that makes it even, uh, more enticing for, for funding.
And the other thing that I just thought of, which you guys are starting to do very well, is you're not putting things in, you know, like a new street, and then putting in a sewer, and then having to put in a new street again. So, if you get the funding for the sewer, are we gonna have funding to repave some of that area?
The, the applicant developer will be responsible for, uh, meeting our, our right-of-way standard, which in this case is half-width improvements along that Martin Street, along their front edge, in addition to some additional improvements along Smith Street, uh, which they sit at the corner of, and we know is just a gravel road currently. Um, so they'll be responsible for their portion of that area, and then, of course, you know, whatever pavement needs to go back over the sewer line trench.
And if we're able to at the time that happens, it's, it's a good time for us to, to, uh, get our other half paving of the city, if, you know, if the funding allows us to get that done, it's a good timing for that. So, that wouldn't be till next year anyway, the next budget year, we could look at that, yeah.
Tuck the sheriffs into maybe part of it, cause it's all their cars.
Let me know.
They have asked, "When are we gonna pave that street?"
Any, any public comment?
Are we opening the public hearing at this point?
Oh, I, yes, we're opening the public hearing at this point.
My name's Mark Kagan, my wife, Lauren, and I, we own a home up at 1280 Martin Street, um, which is gonna be across from where this new project is. Uh, there's, it's actually a private driver, not directly on Martin Street, so there's six homes that are up, uh, in that area, kind of a rural setting. It may be too early to ask these questions, but I have some questions about how this will impact us if we're doing this kind of construction, new sewer, uh, streets, so forth, what, how is our access to our homes gonna be at that time? There's only one way in and out.
Again, as far as when construction physically occurs, uh, they'll, they'll be required to have traffic control, um, items in place to, to go there. I don't, I would not anticipate that they would be closing that street off completely, uh, during that construction. I don't, Doug might know a little better than, than I as far as...
Are you on Smith Street?
Martin Street, but we're up off, we're right past the sheriff's station, we got a private driver.
Oh, okay, where the palm tree is? You go up the hill there?
Exactly.
There actually should be very minimal impact to, to you guys there. Uh, at the most, it would be, uh, what they call a one-way traffic control. In other words, they'd have flaggers out during their work seat, work periods, and then, you know, and there's a limit, we don't let them hold the people any longer than 10 minutes. Uh, and then they would have to allow, but there really is not gonna be a, a lot of activity on Martin Street, so I could see that being a, a short duration. I'm just estimating, but probably no more than one to two months, uh, and they would have what they're gonna do this time all done.
Okay, so my next question on that would be if this sewer project is constructed, at some point, would we be mandated to hook up to this new sewer system, cause we're on septic at, at the moment? So, there's six homes there, whose property would it cross? How much would it cost me for us to be into the system? Would it be mandatory?
That's a good question. Do we have ordinance? If you're within 70 feet, if your septic fails, then you have to hook up?
Is that, Doug, help me here, if it's, is it water or sewer? One of them has it and one of them doesn't.
We have water.
You have water already?
Yeah.
I think that it's sewer, that if you're within 300 feet of the existing line and, um, and it, it does fail, you'd have to hook up. I'd have to see where, it's not coming all the way down the entire length of that property. Um, I'm not sure how far up, up Martin it has to go to hook this property into something. I'd have to measure to see if, if that's something that's gonna affect you or not.
They wouldn't be mandated anyway unless their system failed.
Unless their, unless their septic system failed.
All right.
And then, uh, obviously I have to ask this question, with this type of a, a project going in, what is, what is the thoughts on what we would do to the property bodies in there?
I know, I know that, um, it would be, we can get you some, uh, I'll get you their website to show you what some of their properties look like. They actually do a very nice job in their, um, in their projects and how they keep them up and, and look really nice. So, I, I'll get you a link to their, um, site to, so you can take a look at what that's gonna look like. Um, I don't, I don't know exactly what that would mean as far as values, but I'd like you to see what some of their projects look like.
Okay. Last question would just be, is anybody considering the additional congestion that would be on Martin and Bevins Street in excess of what we have at times now?
Yeah, that, that was analyzed as part of the environmental analysis for the project, uh, by the planning commission in, in 2015, and, uh, looking at Martin Street being a, a collector road, it was determined that it had adequate capacity there, and they're gonna be doing substantial improvements to, to Smith Street as well, so it was, it was determined that there was adequate ability to serve that project on this site.
Yep, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so this is gonna be a half a million dollars worth of, um, a loan or grant, so my question is, do we get a rate increase? Is there another study that comes out? What's happening with that?
Actually, uh, we don't know what the percentage yet is gonna be between loan and grant. And if there's other funding that comes about before this, we won't even go this direction, uh, which we're still hopeful, um, but the developer is going to pay the loan portion of it, if there's any loans, um, on that, so we will have an agreement placed before that happens.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good question, ma'am.
Is there any other member of the public who wishes to speak? All right, I will close the public hearing. Any further discussion?
No, I would move to authorize the city manager to submit an application to USDA through their community facilities loan and grant program in the amount of 495,000 for the purpose of construction of a sewer mains extension to serve the proposed 24-unit affordable multifamily housing project located at 1255 Martin Street.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Onto council communications. Margaret?
Um, other than I's gonna be gone for the next council meeting, um, I'll be down until, from 15th to July 3rd, I'll be back for the, for the next council meeting after that. And, um, also, I sent out an email for those that are going to the con, to the conference in September, and I haven't heard from two of you, so I just, yes. Now that you're the second alternate, I guess you have to go. And I, I'm assuming...
Well, I've, I've got another meeting on 12th, I'll, I'll check into it.
Okay, just let me know, man. I know the, the, the main hotel's already getting sold out, so, but there's plenty of hotels in the area that are gonna be, so, anyway, thank you.
David?
No report, thanks.
Doug?
I would just like to, uh, acknowledge and recognize my public work staff for all the hard work that they've got going on right now, um, with really full plates and how they've really stepped up to try to get all these projects done, between the flood projects that we're now starting to work on. Um, we've completed paving out on Fifth Street from Brush to Forbes, which now completes our emergency, um, route around the downtown area. Uh, they paved Armstrong today. Um, Jim was on his toes, saw Anrak working on a private project here, uh, got ahold of me, we got ahold of Anrak, um, we cut a deal with them for half price. Um, if they would come do some grinding for us, because what they did today would've taken us a week, and they did it in a half a day. And, but in order to get that done, we had to get trees trimmed and dump trucks back in, coming back from paving, I mean, it was, it was really a feat that they pulled off today, but we got Clearlake Avenue ground from where the, uh, paving for the sewer project ended, out to Main Street, and we got Brush Street, uh, ground from 11th to Central. Um, so, that's gonna expedite our paving, and we ended up saving 3,000 bucks. And so, uh, but that's all because of my staff, and so I just wanna acknowledge them for all the hard work that they're doing, so.
You know, the only unfortunate part is we didn't get to give any residents a, a notice that it was happening, but I'm sure they'll be happy that their street's getting done, so, uh, I'd always like to give people a notice before that happens, but...
Right.
Yeah, I seen that sitting on a truck, and I'm thinking, "Boy, did we get a big one."
I wish, George.
Way to go, though, way to jump on that opportunity. Nick?
Uh, nothing to report.
Are you sure?
Positive.
Chief?
No report.
Kevin?
I know it.
Kelly?
Um, just that the benefits fair takes place Friday, um, if any of the council needs to change or add, add benefits, that's at 1:00 here, council chair.
And you can meet all the different providers and ask them questions, so, it's good.
Councilmember Spurrier?
Uh, going to the League of Cities in Sacramento on the 7th for the Transportation Communications and Public Works Committee. And that's about it.
Councilmember Parlet?
Well, I think, um, Stacy and I have APC and LTA next Wednesday, and I'm supposed to be, um, speaker for a local organization at the same time, so I'm gonna have to leave on that one, but I did have an opportunity to speak to somebody about the senior center, and I spoke with the city manager just to let everybody know what's going on, that, uh, they were supporting, uh, Measure Z with the idea that, you know, there would be benefits in different areas, and, um, I've always thought that, um, while we have cemetery districts and fire districts and all these different districts, that everyone, wherever you live, are going to get old, and it doesn't seem like we have a fund that, that takes care of senior centers, and I've watched the senior center over in Lucerne struggle forever doing fundraising and fundraising and fundraising, and they never seem to have enough money. and fundraising and fundraising, and they never seem to have enough money. So somebody reached out to us, and Margaret said they're working on that now, some kind of a program, but I think it's something that we need to be cognizant of, is that seniors are something we're all become, and it's, if their families are out of state, there's no one to take care of them, the senior centers are the, you know, kind of the parachute for them. So I think it's important that we always keep them on our, you know, radar that we need to take care of the seniors. So that was, somebody, they have a new assistant director down there who's very motivated, so I think it's just something that they need some help, he might think about helping them in some ways.
I actually have a meeting with Jonathan tomorrow.
Anyway, that's the only communications I've had.
What's really awesome with that is I try to make it happen, you know, a couple times a month to drop in and one of the senior centers would have lunch. I mean, you get a full meal for like six bucks, and you're helping support the senior center at that point, and, you know, they put on a good service there, so.
But you should pay them 10, because it probably costs them nine, and they're being subsidized, so paying them six is not getting anything.
Right, 10, right.
Right.
But anyway. I'll see your six and raise your pot.
Mayor Matina?
No report.
And I have no report, but I do want to say on this agenda tonight, I just, I, I think it's awesome looking through everything we're doing. You know, we, we got Measure Z passed, and, and we're fixing roads, and, and we're buying cop cars, and, and we're funding the police, you know. We're doing, we're doing the things that, that the voters asked us to do, you know, and I think that needs to really be paid attention to sometimes. We're completing a lot of projects. We've got, we've got a lot of really exciting stuff coming up in the next year. And it's thanks to the people who, who work here on a daily basis and, and the voters out there. So make sure to, make sure to vote.
All right, you've got 10 minutes.
Yeah, you've got 10 minutes.
10 minutes. Go vote.